Our last paper is by Jing. Jing, can you share your slide? Oh, Dan, you need to...
I can, I can just... Good. Okay, I'm Jing. I'm a postdoc at Chicago Booth with the Finance Department, and this is joint work with Ling, who is an assistant professor in computer science at U of U C. So we are going to take a very intuitive finance evaluation, evaluating the payoff in selfish mining as a long-term strategy. And hopefully, in the end of the talk, you're convinced that when you're taking into account the time preference for cash flows, it is not that profitable. So at a high level, the big picture is is the rational agent's behaviors facing these protocols. I want to be very clear that these protocols in CSR now like mechanisms in economics, where the latter are designed to implement equilibrium. The main difference relies on this assumption of honest parties. These honest parties are... They just do whatever these protocols program them to do, and they have no preference and no care for monetary incentives. And these protocols design these rules for the honest parties to follow, such that to solve this alpha tolerant applications. But when you launch the applications in practice, there's people behind the computers. They are rational agents. They are strategic. And there will be exploitations or deviations from these protocols. So selfish mining is a well-studied class of block withholding attack under Nakamoto protocols. So in one sentence, as opposed to required by the protocol that you immediately publish whatever you have mined, this miner would just withhold a block. And by strategically timed dissemination, they can with positive probability to often whatever the others have mined. And it has shown that if your computation power is above some threshold, you can get a larger payoff than your fair share determined by your computation power. So a natural question to ask is, why haven't we observed any selfish mining in practice? There are some agreed-upon explanations, like the attacking threshold computation power is still demanding. And whoever has this kind of computation power are likely to be the stakeholders of Bitcoin. And they care about the price clash whenever they want to attack the system. But this is not a complete explanation in the sense that you can always think about the agents who start from nothing. They rent the computation power. They don't have Bitcoins to start with, and they can show out the Bitcoin value. So this price clash actually would increase their incentive to attack. So this paper incorporates time preference in the cash flow arrival in these kind of selfish mining strategies. We are going to show that even at a very small interest rate, that is 3% per annum, the threshold computation power to attack, that is, you adopt a selfish mining versus honest mining, would increase by 20%. Okay. So what we do in this paper specifically is first we present an analogical tractable framework to incorporate the time horizon for general class of selfish mining strategies. We allow for... We're taking into account the time for cash flow arrivals and cash difficulty adjustment, etc. And then we can think about within the class of selfish mining strategies, what is the trade-off? On the one hand, you would want to withhold your mined block in order to accumulate your strategic advantage. But on the other hand, you would also want to precipitate the cash flow arrival due to time preference and any uncertainty in the reward time. And you may also face other financial frictions like limits of arbitrage that I'm not going to model in this presentation. And we show that due to these considerations, you actually... Actually, the miner would want to take an inventory policy in the sense that you stop accumulating your lead once it exceeds some threshold. Then we think about the incentive for attacking as opposed to honest mining. As I have mentioned earlier, we found a significant higher threshold of computation power to attack. And the payoff is much more sensitive to an important parameter that I'll introduce later. Last, I will talk about some implications for a safer protocol or system. Okay, I will just skip the related literature. This is mostly on selfish mining and some links to the economic literature. So I will first spend a few minutes to lay the background information in case you're not familiar with before I introduce the analytical framework and analyze the trade-offs and attacking incentives. And then at last, I will just conclude. We are talking about the Bitcoin blockchain and the Nakamoto protocol. So the Bitcoin blockchain is a decentralized ledger-keeping system. You have all these Bitcoin transaction records that are capital-screamed locally with each miner. And the network is open in the sense that everyone can become a miner in a permissionless way. In the Nakamoto protocol, at each round, a leader who gets the right to append these Bitcoin transaction records is randomly chosen via solving proof-of-work crypto puzzles. So the miners just commit their computation powers to crack this mingliness crypto puzzles. And whoever just mines first, that is a totally random event, gets some Bitcoin reward. And there are two rules. The first is you must follow the longest chain. Whatever... If you don't, you don't get the Bitcoin reward. For simplicity, I would just put it that way. The second is whenever you have miner blocks, sorry, that's when you solved the crypto puzzle first. You mine a block. You immediately publish your block. So there are some important details to this project, but not generally covered when you excuse me, introduce Nakamoto protocol. First is upon forks of equal length, there is some randomness in choosing which one to follow. Because basically, every miner just have their local view. And if they see one first, they may choose to follow that as the longest chain. Or when they just see two of the forks at the same time, there is some randomness, like coin toss. And second, because it's an open network, there is this mechanism called a difficult adjustment to target block generation at around 10 minutes per block. So per magic number 26 in blocks, the system will look back to see the average generation speed. And for example, if it says that the generation is too slow, the system will just tune down the difficulty of the crypto puzzle accordingly to target this 10 minutes per block. We are studying the selfish mining strategy, which is a rational miner's incentive to follow the rule number two, whether they would want to immediately publish or withhold the block. So I'm going to use the first introduced selfish mining strategy as the baseline strategy in this presentation. I don't want to bury with all these details. So this graph illustrates what the strategy looks like. This number is the state. You can think of it as how many blocks that the miner has already mined, but not yet published. So I will just call it the number of lead on your private chain. So the miner has alpha fraction of computation power. This state transitions illustrates two key elements in this kind of selfish mining strategies. First, if with probably alpha, the miner mines a block first... Mines a block, sorry. Mines a block. He doesn't publish the block, but instead, he just withheld this block, thereby accumulating the private lead. Second is, when does the miner actually publish? That is to target whenever the others have mined something on the main chain. It is not illustrated here, but it's with some probability, one minus alpha. The others would solve the crypto problem first. They mine a block, publish. You would immediately match, causing forks of equal length. And these transitions just nicely show these two elements. So where does the gain come from? So intuitively, if you start with any lead that is above two, with probability one, you would end up here by publishing two blocks to match whatever the others have mined. So you will end up on the longest chain. So along all these paths, you would get all your reward in whatever you have already withheld. And along this path, others will get nothing. Because whatever they have done will end up on a shorter chain that is still offering the others. And there is some risk here. I don't want to talk about too many of the details that if you only have one blocking lead, your reward depends on two things. The riskiness depends on two things, which is whether you can build up your lead or lose your lead. And there is some random rule upon forking here that when the public view is two forks of equal length of one, there is some probability gamma that the others will just think your chain is the longest one and just follow. So when you sit back, you can think... You can kind of understand that what you're doing is you postpone your publishing and target whenever the others are publishing in order to make the others' efforts in vain, sorry. The natural question is, why does hurting others benefit myself? You are actually delaying your payoffs by withholding, and you are taking on some risk on the reward of your first block as opposed, as compared with honest mining, where you will get the reward for sure if you do this immediate publish. So there must be some zero-sum game mechanism that's going on. Fundamentally, this is because the stock of Bitcoin is fixed. So if you think about it, if you don't keep this selfish mining till the very end of the world, but till the very end of... When all the Bitcoins have been mined, you are gaining. That is because you're orphaning others with positive probability. You are actually just taking back whatever others have mined and put it back in the Bitcoin deposit, and we just start again. The second channel is more about implementation. So because of this difficulty adjustment mechanism, whenever you are effectively slowing down the block generation on the longest chain, and the system would think maybe the crypto problem is too hard and would downward adjust this difficulty. So by hurting others, you are increasing your own mining efficiency. Then I'm going to... The rest of the talk, I'm going to convince you that one reason we haven't observed any selfish mining attacks is because this kind of long-term deviation, when you're taking into account the time preference and other frictions, it is actually not that profitable. Okay. So I'm going to talk about our framework. For simplicity, I would just assume that there are a thick set of agents. So instead of a permissionless, open network, effectively, there is only one active agent, the selfish miner, because we are thinking about a deviation strategy instead of thinking about the equilibrium. So I will just fix the other strategies and assume the others are honest miners who follow the Nakamoto protocol. So the mining activity is modeled as Poisson random events with some Poisson intensity lambda. The crypto puzzle is solved by all of the agents, one of them. And this lambda is subject to difficulty adjustment. The miner has alpha fraction of the computation power. So specifically, within the next infinitesimal time dt, with probability alpha lambda dt, the miner solves the crypto puzzle first, and that's mines a block. And regarding the reward time, I will just, for simplicity, assume away the transaction delay. I think this qualitatively affects all the strategies. So this is a kind of a benchmark. I would assume that a Bitcoin that is normalized to $1 is rewarded to whoever mined a block upon the consensus that this block is on the longest chain. So to be more specific, when you see forks of equal length, with... They're immediately upon seeing... Upon publishing the latest two blocks that causing this flux with probability gamma, the consensus is on the minus chain in the sense that the next block will be mined after the minus chain. I will use you as the miner's utility, that is just some expected discounted cash flows and normalized by this miner's instantaneous time discount. And this is a net interest rate. So I will be working with this big V, which is the discounted, total discounted cash flows. This is like you are giving smaller weight to cash flows that are coming from the far future. This infinity here just assumes that this Bitcoin stock is very large. What kind of interest rate are we thinking about? Actually, for this financial experts who are relevant to attack this kind of selfish mining... Conducting this kind of selfish mining strategies, they are pretty high, like 30% per annum due to their funding cost and because they are conducting already very lucrative investment opportunities. But we are going to show that even with very small discount rate, our results are pretty significant. This detail of difficulty adjustment is important. I will just introduce some notation. The crypto difficulty would start with some lambda zero. You can think of it as 10 minutes curve solving a crypto puzzle. And as an approximation to get analogical result, it is modeled as the difficulty adjustment would arrive with some Poisson intensity beta. So they would check on the block generation speed on the longest chain and adjust the crypto difficulty accordingly. So effectively, if everybody is following the honest mining, this crypto difficulty would just never adjust. And if the miner is conducting the selfish mining, the crypto difficulty would adjust with probability one and once for all. So I will start with benchmarks when it either never adjusts or there is an instantaneous adjustment when the miner just starts with this selfish mining strategies. As then to include a more practical adjustment intensity that targets like target at 26 in block. That is the critical point where you do this adjustment. I'm going to take the dynamic programming approach and going to show that these value functions are actually difference equations whose analytical results are well-defined. Remember that I will introduce this S. For now, this S are just your leading on the private chain that are payoff-relevant states. And this V of S are just the value to the miner, the state value to the miner evaluated at the starting point of time. So for simplicity, if you follow honest mining, there is only one state. So the HJV equation is something like this, pretty intuitive. You start with some value V zero. Within the next infinitesimal time dt, you are requiring a gross return of R plus one. And this should be equal to your expected value the next period. So with this probability, the miner mines a block and immediately publish. So it gets a flow payoff of one Bitcoin. And there is the continuation value of this V, because there is no state transition. So the value is actually pretty simple that you just discount because there is only flow payoffs, and you just get the average payoff here. Now, I'm going to incorporate time horizon into the selfish mining payoffs. Recall that we are using this classic selfish mining strategy as the baseline. So this S is the stock of blocks on my private chain that I have withheld before. And I'm going to use this lease strategically to offer the others. Okay. Suppose whenever the miner matches whatever the others have published, that happens with this probability one minus alpha, the miner would get the reward. So compared to the previous equation of what you add later, what you add is this change in the continuation value. There is some capital gain. This is essentially saying that whenever the others have mined something, I lose my lead. Then the lead of S minus one versus the lead of S are different to me. And if I mine the next block, I would accumulate one more block in privately because I withheld it. This would also be a different value. So this is a second-order difference equation. And adding to boundary conditions at the infinity and this mass at the starting of accumulating your lead, you can pin down the value functions analytically. But this is only for the illustration purpose. And I made some mistake here because the miner don't actually cash in when the miner matches whatever the others have published. So the thing is, then you care about the cash flow arrival, the time of cash flow arrival when you are conducting this kind of selfish mining. And there is uncertainty due to the forking rule. You can see this graph here. How do I get to this history? You can think of a miner who start with five blocks on the private chain, that is the miner's lead. It must be that the others publish something first. I matched. And then the others must have followed my chain. And they actually follow the others, causing these two forks of equal length, too. So you can think of here that the first published block of the miner has not yet been recognized as on the longest chain. So we specify here that this block has not been yet rewarded, although this has already been published. So without discount...
Can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
So when you say that the... So imagine in your example, it must be that the solid circle of the second miner at that time has not been released yet. That's why other people are following the others.
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you for the clarification. I'm using the classic selfish mining strategy as the baseline. So this actually says that I only match one block whenever I have two more blocks in lead. Yeah.
Okay, so what happened really is that you had a five, others had a one, and then you had a five, but you just release one. But then you lose because others follow the others. And then at that time, did you release another miner? Is that right?
Yes. My strategy is I will match one block whenever the others publish anything. Yes. And...
And each round, you win with probability gamma.
Yes, each round I win. Let me clarify. This is not like a win. This is like with some probability gamma that the others will follow my fork. So you can also say it as a win. Okay. So we don't care about this earlier without discount because at the boundary, when I reach two blocks in lead, I will just immediately publish two upon the others' publish. Then I will eventually end up on the longest chain. And I will just... I would cash in this for sure. But so, okay. So let me try this once again. It's like without discount, you only care whether or not you will get the reward for sure. Now I care when exactly does the reward come. And this would depend on, in the process, which of the fork the others follow. So you can think of this extreme case where the others never follow you. That is this gamma equals zero. Then in that case, whatever leader you have, you can only cash in upon the boundaries. Whenever that is... You have infinity blocks in lead, you can only cash in when you lose your lead to two. Okay. So then it is important to introduce another state variable, which we call M, which is the number of unrewarded but published blocks that will eventually be your reward as some discount. So what does this do to our earlier HJV equation? When we keep track of this M? So in this event of the others publishing and I'm matching one block. With probability alpha, oh, sorry, with probability gamma, that is the case that I win. I can immediately I get my my published block. Sorry, there's consensus that my published block is on the longest chain, the others will follow me, I can caching this one. And plus whatever that has been delayed earlier, that is M. And I don't have this stock of unrewarded blocks anymore. In the other case, if the others choose to follow the other fork. I I don't caching anything, but I would accumulate this kind of rewarded blocks. So I end up with two state variables. So generally, this don't have analytical solution. But nicely, we show that the value function can be decomposed as difference equations with only one state variable. So intuitively, what in this in this M of unrewarded postponed rewards. Each of this have the same value. So you kind of have this kind of linear equations where you can nicely separate this this M. Okay, so again, we we will have analytical solution by separately dealing this two sets of value equations. So I think I have talked about how to deal with this kind of this class of sufficient mining strategies to calculate their discounted values in general. Then I can discuss about the trade offs. So on the one hand, you would want to accumulate, you accumulate and withhold the blocks to for the strategic advantage. You can see follow up papers that talk about stubborn mining or even taking on short term loss. To expand your strategy space. So they they all have this idea to be more cautious on spending your your private lead in order to maximize their strategic advantage. But on the other hand, I have talked about the time discount and uncertainly reward time. And we show that actually you stop accumulating. Or you stop withholding the further mine blocks once you have reached some boundary K. To model it, you just change a bound boundary condition at K where upon this event that you find some block, you just immediately publish. And we show that in value, whenever K exceeds some lower threshold. It doesn't keep keeping accumulating this K doesn't increase value. But we and we want to emphasize that without discount in a static model. This tell states of S of your private lead exceeding K actually has positive measures and brings in positive gain. We also find that when the there the uncertain reward time becomes so large, you may want to precipitate or your returns by publishing two blocks. So they are to to reduce this uncertainty to zero. Okay. And there are some other concerns in practice that are not incorporating the model that you maybe you are borrowing from investors to take this kind of a tax. And you are subject to some, you're you're not able to take any short term loss. And that would just drastically restrict your strategy space. Okay. Now I'm going to talk about it.
About the potential loss, you could basically introduce some risk aversion. That's that's concavity probably will will be enough. You did, are you, are you going to do it this short term loss thing?
I think it's more sensible to take to to add in restriction, but I don't know.
Yeah, that's that's probably.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I know, I don't know. It's likely if you add the risk aversion, I don't know what it does to other concerns in terms of uncertainty. Yeah. Thank you. That's a really nice suggestion. Okay, so the incentive to conduct this kind of sufficient mining strategy as opposed to honest mining crucially depends on difficulty adjustment. So intuitively, if the Bitcoin stock is sufficiently large, you care so much about when this cash flow arrives, you would this selfish mining strategy will always be dominated by honest mining. Because the controls are delayed. It's also easy to incorporate difficulty adjustment as some random Poisson events. Basically, with some with the probability beta, within the next infinitesimal time dt. You transit to the door continuation value after the adjustment. You remember that lambda one is the target crypto difficulty arrival rate. When this adjustment has occurred. So we find that even if we think about financial expert who has a really high discount rate. They under this 2016 rule, it's actually just two weeks and it doesn't matter a lot. You are patient enough to just just think of think of it as a more like a instantaneous adjustment in terms of value. So we so we show that. So this is a graph showing the relative payoff of conducting selfish mining versus honest mining. So there's a horizontal line of one is just just your break even break even line. And this is plotted against the fraction of mining power that is alpha. I want to emphasize two things. First is the green line of of gamma equals 0.5. That is a coin toss of 50 50 winning winning probability whenever whenever the miner ends up at forks of equal length as compared with with the others. In the original strategy, you your threshold policy would, sorry, your threshold attacking power would be a quarter. And here is around 0.3, that that is like a significant 20% increase in in demanding the hurdle hurdle computation power. And I want to emphasize this like 3% annual interest rate. That is pretty low, close to the riskless rate. And the second point I want to emphasize is that remember that if you have in the original strategy, if you have a winning probability of one. You would always want to attack. This is very important because with because it is very hard to increase your computation power as opposed to increase this gamma equals to to target at this gamma equals one. So the the fragile system is usually under this assumption. We show that even even as this gamma approaches one. You you still demand a significant amount of of mining power. And as I've talked about earlier, because of this two week expect expected length of difficulty adjustment just arrives too fast. Even with an intermediate interest rate, your result don't change much. So your time preference is largely discounted, is largely compensated by this difficulty adjustment mechanism. Okay, I'm going to talk about the implications of mitigating the selfish mining concern. First, intuitively, if the might, if the attacker or the miner cares about the time. They would want to precipitate the time of cash flow arrivals. It will hurt them if the difficulty adjustment occurs really, really late in in time. And also, if you increase this block generation speed, say you increase from 10 minutes to 30 minutes. This this must this effectively also postpone the time of difficulty adjustment. So this once again illustrates the trade off between safety versus liveliness. And also very intuitive intuitive improvement on the route to improve the protocol is that we see that this selfish mining strategy takes advantage of the forking rules. Why don't you just count the often blocks when you do the difficulty adjustment? As they are actually legitimately solved crypto puzzles. So if you count them, you you are initially, you when you introduce this difficulty adjustment, you want to improve the liveliness of the open network. You don't hurt it if you if you count the often blocks. Okay. And next, also, I want to briefly connect to the economics literature. I want to join an analogy of defining the off equilibrium strategy space. You can think of, we want a desirable outcome of honest mining, that is everyone just immediately publish whatever they have mined. If this is the equilibrium path. Then forking would be a trembling head path and the miner is actually taking taking advantage of this very small probability event. And you want to probably define the strategies and the payoffs along these paths. You can think of instead of six black buried rule, you can think of increasing that or that would just drastically restrict the strategy space of selfish mining. And I also want to connect to to cite that to to refer to the folk theorem, well known folk theorem in the repeated games. It basically says that if you don't have any discount rate, if you are patient enough. Virtually any payoff can be supported in a subgame perfect equilibrium. And if you even increase this discount rate by epsilon, that would drastically reduce the equilibrium space. So we so we highlighted the long term future of selfish mining and emphasized that it has important financial implications. And and to improve the protocols and safety of the system. Defining this off equilibrium paths and strategies are important. Thank you once again for the invitation.
All right, thanks. Thanks for for the presentation. The organizers are going to hand it over to the organizers. What else do we need to do? Hello?
If there's nothing else, I think you can wrap up.
Okay, okay. Thanks so much. This is for, you know, I would say it's a pretty frontier research and I hope that this type of paper will be more and more and show enough in different conferences. Okay? Have a good night or whatever morning on the other side. Thank you.